Let me start the meeting. Welcome to the Meeting in North Penn School District's Board of School Directors for July 21st, 2016. We have a show for you. Those two screens and this one?
Summer is here, and it is the season for sun, fun, and hard work by our crews behind the scenes. Let's take a look at what has been happening in the district this summer. Over at North Penn High School, the artificial turf has been replaced and is just about ready for fall sports. The finishing touches are happening now, and things are looking nice and green. Also, the high school's maintenance and custodial crews have been hard at work changing over the home offices to a new house system. A bit of remodeling was needed to create the office spaces that are now dedicated for the class of 2017, 2018, and 2019. And while all of this is happening, the regular summer cleaning is on track for the first day of school. Floors are shined, desks are clean, and things are looking mighty spiffy for everyone's return next month. Day campers are also hard at work, learning and playing, in the district's community education summer camps. Some of the camps held this summer include basketball camp, numerous art and drawing camps, a baking camp, and a rocketry camp. These camps are just a small representation of what great things are offered by community education each summer. The renovations at Montgomery Elementary are moving along. The temporary modular classrooms have been placed, and work is progressing on the front of the building, including classrooms, library, and main offices. And if you are looking to have a great time for a great cause, do not forget to sign up for the North Penn Educational Foundation's annual golf outing. Held at Pine Crest Country Club on Monday, August 15th, the Cinco de Mayo-themed event kicks off with lunch at 11:45, and first swing is at 1:00 P.M. For more information on this event, contact Christine Labaroski at the information on your screen. And that is all for this North Penn news update. Be sure to check out our YouTube channel at youtube backslash NPTV. Enjoy the rest of your summer, and we'll see you in August.
Welcome to our regularly scheduled action meeting. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. And now, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start, I want to announce the board did have an executive session tonight, July 21st, 2016, from roughly 7:00 to 7:30 to discuss matters of potential litigation.
Mr. President, may I remind you, we also had one last week. We neglected to put that in that little reminder that we wrote for you. We did have one, remember, last week, and that was from 5:30 till...I think that took us till about 7:00, right? So, let's say 5:30, 7:00 is pretty accurate.
July 16?
It's Tuesday.
12.
12.
12.
12. Okay, July 12th, 2016, the board had a personnel meeting, an executive session for matters of personnel.
Correct.
That went on from 5:30 P.M. to 7:00 P.M. roughly on the 12th. I'm sorry. 12th. Correct. All right, it is our time to...actually, the board's favorite time to do recognition and proclamation, so I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Dietrich.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, we do want to recognize members of the North Penn Television. And with us this evening, we have Bob Gilmer to make the presentations.
Let's watch these guys. They've been covering board meetings for about two years now. Cannot mess this up. Did a good job, Quadri. And good. All right. They know it. They should know it. Thank you to the board administration for inviting us tonight. We're here to talk about the National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences. North Penn Television had five nominees in this year's Emmy contest. And you always hear this, being nominated is an honor, and truly, it is. There's a criteria that gets judged across the Mid-Atlantic region, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, and Maryland, where it's sent out to professional television stations, and all of our entries are judged, and they have to meet a certain criteria first before it's even nominated for consideration in the Emmy category, and then it's a judge at that point, and then the Emmys are given out. There are 10 categories this year. This year, we won in the category for talent, and it was for our 2016 North Penn High School simulated political convention. And if anybody was watching North Penn Television yesterday and today, I was kind of competing with the convention that's going on this week, so if you kind of got tired of that stuff, you could tune in and watch the fake stuff and see what we did. Just for a little note, if you think about back to the convention the high school did back in January, the students this year decided to do their own party. Usually, we'd flip Democratic and Republican conventions through all these years. This year, they created the Millennial Party, which kind of opened up any candidate. And their nominee, if anybody wants to guess, was...take a guess on who their nominee might have been?
Bernie Sanders.
Bernie Sanders. And the vice president was?
Mr. Henry.
Mr. Henry at the high school, so who knows? He's still got a shot. It's coming up. So, the category we won in was for talent. We submitted our coverage of the convention. They did about 10 hours on the air between those two days when we did the convention. So, it's a whole team effort. In particular, three or two of our anchors are here tonight, Eric Byteman and Matty Payton. We're on the air for those 10 hours, along with Matty Heilvile, the entire time. So, as you're watching the conventions now, and there's dead time, and you watch how poorly people vamp to fill that time, these guys were stellar in doing that and providing real information about what was going on on the floor, and it's just such a great experience for all students involved, but in particular for North Penn Television, for our entire crew. We're on the air, and we've got to make it happen, creating packages and doing all the types of things you see in a real convention. So, we're going to recognize our seniors that are here tonight. We usually don't bring a whole crew out, because seniors will always have an opportunity. This is our 15th Emmy in 14 years that we've earned since 2002. So, I'm going to start with Quadri Fletcher. Quadri is one of our producers this year. You can go ahead and shake your hand. Quadri's going to Temple to study media, media studies and production. Lots of early mornings with Quadri, lots of late nights. You guys recognize him from being here at the board meetings. Next is Tyler Pittis, but he's not here tonight. I'm going to out Tyler. He's at a baseball game, so he's enjoying the Phillies tonight. He's going to La Salle next year. Next is Andrew Bakita. He's also one of our producers. Again, you've seen a lot of Andrew here at the school board meetings, also producing the different shows, news, and mornings that we have going on at North Penn High School. Next is Eric Byteman. Eric was on the floor. He was down in the mix during the convention. He was our anchor on the floor, providing coverage there. Eric's going to be going to Wilkes University, study sports management. He says he's going to replace Harry Howie Roseman in four or five years. He's got it. Next is Matty Payton. Matty Payton was on the main desk. She was the one steering everything during the convention, holding everything together, also an anchor for our morning show. You may also know Matty from her writing on The Night Crier. So, Matty's going to go to Penn State next year, studying secondary education. Her plans are to be who?
Mr. Minero.
Mr. Minero. It's a good thing, it is. Next is Matty Heilvile. She can't be with us tonight. She's a junior. Now, she's the one that did all our interviews for us in the studio on set, bringing all the dignitaries in to talk to them during the convention, also part of our crew the whole time, but she's unable to be here tonight. So, she's studying North Penn Television next year as a senior. And last is Harrison Freel. He's also not able to be here tonight. He's going to NYU. So, thank you for having us tonight. These are North Penn Television seniors, heading off to greener pastures next year.
All right, guys. Ladies and gentlemen, for the full board administration, we thank each and every one of you, so come on through. And Bob, would you like to join them at the end?
I would love to. No, you did sorry.
We are also pleased this evening to recognize members of the Odyssey of the Mind teams, and with us this evening, we have Joanne Wernas to make some presentations. Joanne?
Good evening, school board members, cabinet members, and Dr. Dietrich. On behalf of the students who participated in Odyssey of the Mind this year, their coaches and their parents, I would like to thank you for your continued support of North Penn Odyssey of the Mind. This year, 15 teams representing five elementary schools, each of the three middle schools, and the high school participated in Odyssey of the Mind, commonly referred to as OM. As you may know, OM is a co-curricular program which encourages students to use the knowledge they learn at school to work collaboratively to solve a stated problem. Their problem solution is presented in an eight-minute skit, which is performance-based and often includes technical elements. Creativity and humor are also essential. Each team performs their skit at a regional tournament, and based upon their scores can advance to the state and world finals. OM is an activity which affords our students an opportunity to grow, to dream, and yes, OM is yet another opportunity for our district's students to achieve greatness. Tonight, you will meet students from five teams that were successful at the Odyssey of the Mind regional competition and advanced to the state tournament. One team, whose students attend North Penn High School, advanced to the world finals and placed 10th out of 47 teams from around the world, including the United States, Poland, Mexico, China, and Korea. In this changing world, the capacity to innovate and the ability to solve problems creatively has become increasingly important. Odyssey of the Mind is creating innovators. The many parents who support North Penn Odyssey of the Mind do so because they believe it has the potential to prepare our students for a future where innovation, collaboration, and problem-solving are critical to success. And they are appreciative that their district supports a program that is part of a revolution in learning. Once again, on behalf of students who participate in Odyssey of the Mind and their families, thank you for your continued support of North Penn Odyssey of the Mind. Now, I'd like to present to you the team members of these five teams. First, from North Wales Elementary School, the coaches are Angela Min...excuse me, Angela Min and Mike Schmidt Lang, and our first student is Alex Gopal. Daniel Schmidt Lang. Christian Seferano. And from Pendale Middle School, coached by Diane Wright, we have Amber Scattergood. Samantha Block is unable to attend tonight. Lauren Eglin. Jane Peters. Kyle Har is unable to attend tonight. Ivy Scattergood. Avery Lawrence is unable to attend tonight. And from the Pembroke team, coached by myself and Alex Chu, Riley Badkey and Nicole Chu are unable to attend tonight. Then we have Natalie Upright. Viann Chang. Sally Myers. Elise Upright. From Gwinnett Square Elementary School, coached by Adrian Lockery and Chris Stausky, we have Megan Lockery. Gabrielle Stausky. Jack Bachman. Amog Desai. Katherine Kaiser is unable to be here tonight. And Alex Shuto. From our North Penn High School team, coached by myself and Patty Har, we have Madison Wernas. Madison is a senior this year. She's...she will attend Georgia Mason University in the fall and study communications with a minor in public relations. Kate Har. David Shelley is unable to attend. Thanks again.
Another round of applause for you, Jack. All right, guys. This is your chance for the full administration, the full board to thank you, so please come through. And would you join them at the end, please?
Absolutely.
Congratulations, sir. Again. Ms. Min, congratulations again. Well, congratulations again. Congratulations. Congratulations. I take it on. Congratulations again. Congratulations. Ivy, congratulations again. Congratulations. See you again in the future, I'm sure. You'll be back.
Joanne, we have this for you, and these are the guys who weren't here tonight, so you can make sure you get them, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
One more round of applause for these guys.
This school board meeting will be aired on Comcast Cable Channel 28 and Verizon FiOS 29 on the following dates. Friday, July 21st at 7:30 P.M. Monday, July 22nd at 12:30 P.M. and 7:30 P.M. Tuesday, July 23rd, 12:30 P.M. and 7:30 P.M. And Wednesday, July 24th, 12:30 P.M.
Hey, is it just me, or is that the smoothest proclamation we've ever had? Ever? It's amazing.
Good job, Josie.
Exceptional kids. All right. Let's move forward with our agenda. I will say that I've enjoyed the Odyssey of the Mind every year I've been here. I know my kids got a chance to be a part of that, too, and it is a phenomenal program.
It is.
Let's move forward with our audience of citizens. Anybody wishing to speak to the board, feel free to step forward, state your name and address, sign the Audience of Citizens logbook.
Good evening to the board, and over the summer, we have a lot of opportunities to see that the work is progressing very nicely on the infrastructure. We're also able to see some of the products of the academic system, the Odyssey of the Mind, and once again, we're demonstrating to the other districts in the Commonwealth that we're really making quite a difference in the education of the Commonwealth. And I'm sure that many districts, although there are many of them, over 500, which I think it's a little bit of fragmentized. I was looking at Turkey Foot School District. They have 399 kids in one building, so that Somerset County, so I just wonder how that really works. I mean, I guess the teachers teach five or six different subjects, but you know, there's progress that can be made. Okay, now, what I want to talk to you about tonight is, I think that in the tax structure, we have some properties...I'm speaking specifically of the commercial properties and the rental properties. There's a large apartment complex over in Hatfield. I mean, I was actually shocked how many buildings are in that place, and I was riding with a young lady, and she said, "Oh, I moved from Brookside. I'm over here now." And she said, "Wow, there's so many kids over here, I don't know." I said, "Well, I wonder what kind of taxes they're paying." Because I said, "On my unit, my little piece of earth," I said, "I pay $4,090." Now, I don't know how many units that this very large apartment complex has, but if you broke that down on a per-unit basis, I would challenge them to be sending $4,090. I don't even know whether they have multiple families that may not be related, or they may be related. I don't know. And then, driving by, I went by Sequoia Outdoor, Outback, whatever it is. They build a large storage shed out back. I'm sure they got a building permit. I sure would like to be able to participate in that expansion in that business, and I guess that will come. But I have a definite suspicion that these apartment houses and these rental units are not contributing what would be a fair and equitable amount for the students. And I think with a little due diligence, on a case-by-case basis, I'm not saying about spot zoning, but I'm telling you that I don't know how this is going to work out, because we're going to need to make up some revenue, because I see Merck...oh, yes, they had another layoff, and they're building in Massachusetts and out in the Bay Area in California. So, down the road, I could say they'll either merge with another large drug company and move out of the country, or they'll close this facility down, and they'll just be buying whatever bio-research they need from another company rather than growing it internally. So, that's going to be a challenge down the road. I was very nice about this TV broadcasting, but I have to bring notice, I always make a comment on it. One major network almost has no announcers, young ladies over 30. They're all blond. And I said, "Wow, I wonder if that's blatant age discrimination." I don't know, but you know, when I see other people coming along, I said, "Wow, I sure hope you fit into that little thing that they expect you to look like, because from my perspective, wow, that's blatant age and gender discrimination, but that's another topic." Okay? Now, I hope if any of our professional staff that are in our employ, if they decide to leave, I hope that whatever their salary that they are being paid now, I hope that wouldn't be passing the baton to the next person. "Oh, yeah, you're going to pick up." Because those people would be...they may come from a past history, and I don't really know what their salary structure should be. I did a little thing, and just one thing, in Pennsylvania, the average salaries went from $94,261 to a high of $135,800. So, that's a pretty wide discrepancy, and I guess due to the size of the districts or whatever's involved, that's a pretty wide...and I would like to know that when anybody is replaced, that they don't just get the baton and move on from the past salary, that they fall back. And emphasizing what Mr. DiSazio said about, "No, we're not giving three-year contracts anymore. We're going year by year, because I'm not getting locked into anything." And I think in a modern society, if anybody thinks they're going to have, like, you know, a sweetheart deal for five years, three years, whatever it is, I think we need to bear due diligence to every category, every occupation, and I don't believe that we should deviate from the norm or the average pay. I mean, I know, you tell me, "Oh, well, we got to do this so we attract qualified personnel." I don't know if they're qualified or not. I've heard of a lot of people in different positions, and they came with a lot of hope and aspirations, and you know what happens? They get to work as a CEO in a NYSE company, they last about a year, because you know what? They don't even measure up. How do we ever get somebody so bad? But that happens sometime. And before I go tonight, I made a practice of calling all the members on the board, and it does say on the...said you can either contact them by telephone or by email. Mr. O'Donnell, I called you a couple of times. I think it was five or six times. You have never, ever answered my call. Now, I know that you might find me a little caustic or a little bit hard to get along with. I wanted to discuss with you about the situation with the commercial taxes and the rental, but I can't talk to you, and so I have to tell you tonight. I want you to call me. I want to meet with you, so we can discuss this in your finance committee. That's what I expect. I'm a taxpayer. You volunteered for this job? Answer the phone. Thank you very much.
Mr. Patchell. I have a prepared statement for you. These are the rules. This is a board action meeting. We follow Robert's Rules of Order. The agenda allows for citizens' comments up to five minutes. I've been on the board for 19 years now, and I'm happy serving here. During this time, I've had hundreds, if not thousands, of conversations either face-to-face or on the telephone with residents, taxpayers, and parents. The overwhelming majority of these interactions have been very pleasant, but some less so. The reality is, you can't please everyone all the time. Unfortunately, due to Mr. Patchell's consistent threatening behavior towards me, as just shown here, I have no choice but to limit all interactions with him to that which is legally required. I take his threats and anger very seriously. Mr. Patchell is, of course, free and able to take advantage of his right assured by the Sunshine Act to express his views during the public comment period of each board and committee meeting, but I will no longer speak privately to him in person or on the phone. Thank you.
Recommend approval of the minutes of the June 16...I'm sorry, anybody else want to speak? Recommend approval of the minutes of the June 16, 2016 action meeting as circulated.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mrs. Charnock. Comments or questions to those minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Let's go through committee reports, and I'll start with education, community, and policy. Mrs. Leonard?
Thank you, Mr. Shipinski. The ECP committee did not meet this month. Our next meeting will be August 8th at 6:30 P.M. at the ESC. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance, Mr. O'Donnell.
Finance meeting. The regularly scheduled meetings for June and July were canceled. The next meeting should be on Monday, August 29th, 2016, right here in this room at 6:30 P.M. Thank you.
Personnel, Mr. Kerr.
Yes, the Personnel Committee did meet this month. Wow. Summertime, imagine that. Executive session, July 5th, from 5:30 to 6:30 to discuss matters of personnel, negotiations, and potential litigation. End of report.
Thank you. Support Services, Mr. Schilling.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Shipinski. Yes, the Support Service Committee meeting did meet on Monday, June 21st, and discussed the following information. The committee was provided an update on the rehabilitation, reconstruction, repair of the high school as a result of the fire on May 24, 2016. To date, the band and chorus areas have been cleaned and all instruments cleaned and repaired. Reconstruction will commence in about a one week. Committee also was presented a change order for Hatfield Elementary renovations and addition project, General Contractor Low Bar Incorporated, for changes during construction and unused allowances. This change order is part of this evening's agenda for board consideration. The committee was provided an update, Montgomery County Elementary renovations and additions project, and discussed work in progress and the required requirement for a letter of credit to be provided to Montgomery Township. And also, the Support Service Committee to discuss the facility used request by a member of community to rent Penfield Middle School auditorium November. This request is in accordance with Board Policy 1330, Use of Facilities. This request is on this evening's agenda for consideration. End of report. Our next committee meeting will be held...I'm sorry, our next committee meeting was scheduled for July 24th, but has been canceled. The next meeting then will be...the Support Service Committee will be Monday, August 29th, 6:00 P.M. here at the ESC. End of report. Thank you.
Any questions to Support Services? North Penn Educational Foundation, Mrs. Murphy.
Thank you. Support Services, Mr. Schilling.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Shapinski. Yes, the Support Service Committee meeting did meet on Monday, June 21st, and discussed the following information. The committee was provided an update on the rehabilitation, reconstruction, repair of the high school as a result of the fire on May 24, 2016. To date, the band and chorus areas have been cleaned, and all instruments cleaned and repaired. Reconstruction will commence in about a one week. Committee also was presented a change order for Hatfield Elementary renovations and addition project, General Contractor Low Bar Incorporated, for changes during construction and unused allowances. This change order is part of this evening's agenda for Board consideration. The committee was provided an update, Montgomery County Elementary renovations and additions project, and discussed work and progress and the required requirement for a letter of credit to be provided to Montgomery Township. And also, the Support Service Committee to discuss the facility use request by a member of community to rent Penfield Middle School auditorium November. This request is in accordance with Board Policy 1330, Use of Facilities. This request is on this evening's agenda for consideration. End of report. Our next committee meeting will be held, I'm sorry, our next committee meeting was scheduled for July 24th but has been canceled. The next meeting then will be, the Support Service Committee will be Monday, August 29th, 6 p.m. here at the ESC. End of report. Thank you.
Any questions to Support Services? North Penn Educational Foundation, Mrs. Murphy.
Well, our big month is coming up, August. The foundation did not meet in July, but much work was being completed behind the scenes planning the 15th Annual Golf Outing. Both sponsorship and player spots are filling up quickly. The event is Monday, August 15th at Pinecrest Golf Course. The scramble shell contest includes a lunch provided by Tex-Mex, dinner, and a chance to win fabulous prizes. And don't forget, it's a quinceanera-themed day celebrating 15 years of this wonderful fundraising event. Also in August, the foundation will hold its second annual Rita's Icebreaker with our new teachers and their mentors. This is a great time to get to know our newest educators and also tell them about the opportunities provided by the foundation. I want to thank Rita's and Lansdale for their ongoing support. The foundation's annual report is in the process of being completed and will be distributed next month. It's always a pleasure to read through the report and recognize the effort that goes into running such an organization. If you have any questions about the foundation, you can contact Christine Libarowski at the ESC. Information can also be found online at www.northpenn.org/foundation. So, we hope to see you at the golf outing in August. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Murphy. Any questions for the foundation? Let's do Safe Schools, Ms. Charnock.
Thank you, Mr. Shapinski. The Safe Schools Committee has not met since the last Board meeting. The next meeting of the Safe Schools Committee is scheduled for 6 p.m. Monday, September 12th, prior to the ECP meeting at the ESC. End of report.
Okay. North Monco Technical Career Center, who's got this one?
Who has that?
I guess I have.
I have everybody's name here, so you tell me.
We did meet in June, and nothing particularly sticks in my brain, which tells me that it was a normal meeting, and...
Basic hiring for the summer?
Sorry about that, but I think those that were there, too, you know, it was just an action meeting, accomplish what we need to accomplish, do not meet in August, or I'm sorry, in July, will meet in August. Sorry about that.
Report. A little stilted. Montgomery County Intermediate, Mrs. Murphy.
Thank you. The Board of the IU met on Wednesday, June 22nd, at its facility in Norristown. The meeting began with end-of-year recognitions and kudos. The officers selected to serve until June 30th, 2017 are President Thomas DiBello, Springfield Veep, Mara Bury, Upper Marion, Secretary Leslie Feingold, Colonial, and Treasurer Dr. David Hakes from Upper Moreland. Three policies were added. Number 626, fiscal compliance, new. 626.1, travel dispersment, federal guidelines, new. And 827, conflict of interest, new. It was suggested that the contracts of Brad Landis and Jack Herby be renewed on July 1st rather than waiting until October. Then all administrative contracts will be in alignment, the raises will be in accordance with the Act 1 index. There were 40 contracts, service agreements approved to be led by the IU staff in the next few months, which is very exciting. The new building has really brought all kinds of opportunities for us. The next important dates are August 24th, the MC IU all-staff opening day, and August 24th, the MC IU Board meeting that evening. Respectfully submitted, Carolyn Murphy.
Thank you, Mrs. Murphy. Any questions of the IU? All right, we're going to move forward with the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Dietrich.
Thank you, Mr. President. I recommend approval for the Medical Director, Medical Examiners, Dental Examiners, and Medical Dental Clerk with associated pay rates listed for the 2016-17 school year per Item 6716.
Motion, who? I didn't hear.
Terry Prokowsky.
Did somebody make the motion first? I heard the second.
I heard the second.
All right. Motion by Mrs. Prokowsky, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions?
Yeah, questions, Steve.
Go ahead.
Steve, for here, we're referring to the 1617, so we're, for example, Dr. Scholar, we're paying him $11,000, so we're paying him a year in advance?
No, that's just establishing the rate for the year.
Okay, okay. And we pay him at the end of the year?
I don't know the methodology, you know, I think they're...
Is it spring sports, winter sports, that kind of thing?
Yeah, I don't know the schedule. I do know that it's not paid upfront, but...
Okay, but this is just establishing the rate?
The rates for the entire fiscal year, correct.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Approved?
Recommend approval of the Act 93 Administrative Compensation Plan effective July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017.
Motion by Mrs. Leonard, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions?
Yes. During our executive session, I really didn't hear people say, "I'm in favor of this or that." I only heard one person say they didn't want the 2.75. I want to take another crack at this, and I don't know if any other Board members feel the same way I do. We approved the budget, the majority of the Board approved the budget at 2.75. One person was really upset, made phone calls, got the votes, knocked it back down to 2.4. Just yesterday, our business administrator, oh, the difference between the 2.4 and the 2.75 is $23,000. It amounts to $418 for the 55 administrators. And just yesterday, barring any last-minute journal entries for the cash flow report, last year, we budgeted a shortfall of $2.6 million, but we actually came in at $4,331,000. In my mind, we can afford the $23,000. So I'm going to make a last effort. Does anybody feel the same way I do, rather the 2.4, to put it up to the 2.75? Now, I do agree with the vacation day issue, but I'm not going to get into that. But does anybody, anybody feel that strong about giving the administrators the extra $418? Is anybody, or is everybody going to keep quiet?
Frank, I think we've all voiced our opinions on this topic multiple times, and I can appreciate your willingness to support that, but that's not the motion that we're about to vote on.
Okay, I just wanted to one last shot. Sorry, Bill.
Any other comments? I have a motion and a second.
I just want to thank the group, Act 93 group, some of the Board members, we met with the group a couple of weeks back, and since the last meeting, I think a lot of good progress was made. I think we got to a place here where a lot of people are comfortable, and I think this is another example of, it goes to show how all of our groups of employees really this year have come together and helped us get through a challenging budget year, and I appreciate everybody that was involved, so thank you.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Two nays, motion still passes. Let's move on.
Recommend approval to establish the subrates for the 2016-17 school year as listed per Item BA4.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Murphy, second by Mr. Diazio. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the general insurance package for the 2016-17 fiscal year to expect insurance group in the amount of $570,166 per Item 6916.
Motion by Mrs. Prokowsky, second by Mr. Schilling. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of Change Order 1 to Spin Turf LLC for the High School Artificial Turf Replacement Project at a change of contract amount of $3,802.53 for changes during construction per Item 7016A through B.
Motion by Mrs. Murphy, second by Mrs. Charnock. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry.
Recommend approval to allow a member of the community to use the Penfield Auditorium for an event in November in accordance with the School Board Policy 1330 per Item 7116.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. Diazio. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of a proposal from Verizon Incorporated for the relocation of the communications cabling at Montgomery Elementary in the amount of $24,614 per Item 7216A through C.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Diazio, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? This is our cable, right? We have to move our cable, right? Just making sure. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of Change Order GC10 to Low Bar Incorporated for the Hatfield Elementary School additions and renovations project at a change of contract amount of $680.89 for various changes during construction and unused allowances per Item 7316A through B.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Prokowsky, second by Mrs. Charnock. Comments or questions? Did everybody read, that's it, $680? Did everybody read the email from PSBA today about the funding of the PlanCon? That means, all that money they owe us, we might actually get some of it?
Good.
It's a celebration.
That is a celebration.
Somebody thought that was going to happen. Did you notice also, did you also read how they, the CFA, I guess that's the funding agency, is floating the bond in the fall, but the PDEs, the guys distributing the money, so we'll get that check, you know, predated five months in advance or something like that. That's the way they work. Phenomenal.
Yeah.
Yeah, hey, look, it finally came, we knew it would.
Yeah, I thought so.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of the 2017 district-initiated real estate tax assessment appeals per Item BA5.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Prokowsky, second by Mrs. Charnock. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved.
Recommend ratification of the letter of credit agreement between Covenant Bank and North Penn School District with Montgomery Township as the beneficiary for a fee of 0.45% of the letter of credit amount for the renovations, new construction project at Montgomery Elementary School, and further authorizing the Board President and the Board Secretary to execute the necessary documents.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Prokowsky, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry.
Recommend acceptance of the gifts to the district as listed.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mrs. Charnock. Comments or questions?
Yeah, I just want to thank, again, these people for donating. I really appreciate it.
Absolutely.
We really appreciate it.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Recommend approval of bids per Item BA6A through C as listed.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Prokowsky, second by Mr. Diazio. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved.
Recommend approval of personnel items listed A through C.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Diazio, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? A lot of great hires this summer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Abstain.
So noted.
Recommend approval of the student travel per Item BA9.
Motion by Ms. Charnock, second by Mrs. Prokowsky. Comments or questions to the student travel? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of contracts per BA10A through D, copies of which are on file in the Office of Business Administration.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of alternative placements per BA11, copies of which are on file in the Office of Special Education.
Motion by Mrs. Charnock, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Let's move forward with our Finance Report. Mr. Shrock.
Thank you, Mr. President. This report is through the month of June 2016. Cash receipts for the month totaled $10,764,139.27, while dispersments for the month of June totaled $29,828,847.6. So total available cash for the school district on June 30th was $59,696,365.44. End of report.
Thank you. Let's move forward with our sanction and approval of invoices.
Recommend ratification of dispersments for the month of June 2016 in the amount of
So moved.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, second by Mr. Schilling. Comments or questions?
Yeah, Steve, we talked on the phone about the checks and the vouchers in the back?
Yes.
I just thought after we talked about that, it would be a nice thing to have a goal of you or somebody in your staff to like, get on the phone or something to increase that, because that's a great way of saving time and money.
Right, what Mr. O'Donnell's referring to, you might notice on the check register, there's some checks where a check number is not listed, it's listed as a V. The V stands for a voucher. That's basically an ACH payment or electronic payment, direct deposit, if you will, into the account of the vendor, the vendor with whom we have a business arrangement with. And it actually is a goal of an individual in the business office, and we are contacting through mail, when we send out a check, we send out a document for the vendors to complete so we can capture their banking information. Our goal in a couple of years is basically to eliminate paper checks completely. That's our goal. So, when we do new independent contractor agreements, which the Board just approved some tonight, that's always something that, along with setting up the contract, we capture their bank account information so we can electronically distribute funds as opposed to mailing out a hard copy check. So there'll be a day in the not-too-distant future where we have 100% payments of our accounts payable to vendors electronically. We have 100% direct deposit for our employees now, we don't issue any paychecks to employees, so we want to get to that same point with our vendors as well. It definitely increases the efficiency of our department.
It's great for a business relationship. Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Let's do budget transfers.
I recommend approval of the May 2016 budget transfers in the amount of $760,781.29 per Item BA-12A through D.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or questions of budget transfers? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Under Other Business, I have one item, Mr. Snyder, is this going to be your last Board meeting?
I don't believe so. I think I'll be here in August if there is a Board meeting.
Okay, all right, and we're going to have a nice celebration for you. That was our hope.
No need.
And we were afraid, because we weren't sure that, whether he would be here or not, so I wanted to make sure. Thank you. Any other business?